Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of January 9th, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you. Well, Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you for joining us. It's always a pleasure to have the public engage with us. We want to welcome today our new Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Parlier will now be serving. Thank you, Councilmember Bob Smith, for serving for the last two years. We appreciate that, and we are now going to get started. So at this time, Pastor Timothy Berry from the Garden Community Church will offer the invocation. We just really thank the garden for being so engaged in our community, really being willing to serve. And then, following the invocation, we have a superstar, Kalani Berger, Senior at Foothill High School, is going to lead us in the pledge. She's an outstanding student in every regard, many, many honors academically and in extracurricular activities. She is a member of the very esteemed prestigious California Scholarship Federation, a 2018 Scholar-Athlete Awardee for Swimming and Cheer, Presidential List Scholar, International Thespian Society, National Honored Thespian, International Thespian Society, we're going to have her do a little play in a minute, a swimmer, cheerleader, Thespian journalist, youth group member from the Ridgeview Community Church Youth Group, and she is going to Princeton. So, thank you so much for participating here and for being such an outstanding member of our community. And she is next to her uncle, who is super proud of her uncle, Mark Martinez, professor at CSUB. Pastor Timothy, would you please come and lead us in the invocation? Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and first, thank you for the opportunity to come and just speak just for a little bit, as well as just to pray. I just want to thank you, each of you councilmembers, for serving our community. I know that you do a lot in our community that is not noticeable. All that you do behind the scenes, the sacrifice that you make with your families, with friends, to serve our community, thank you for all that you do. Happy New Year, and my desire this evening is just to speak a prayer of blessing, not only over each of you, but over our city, because I believe that the Lord has amazing things in store for Bakersfield. You believe in this city, you believe in the people, and that's why you've chosen to be a part of this amazing government that we have here in Bakersfield. So, as I pray, I just ask that everyone would bow their heads and let's offer our Thanksgiving to the Lord. So Heavenly Father, I thank you for this year 2019. I invite your presence to come into this room right now. And I ask you, Lord, that you would not only bless this year, but that you would bless this city, the City of Bakersfield. You love this city. You love the people that live in this city. You love Kern County. And so I ask for an open heaven to come over our region and over our city, that you would bring about all of your purposes and your plans, that you would bring about fruitfulness that we've yet to see. I ask that you would bless every councilmember and every staff and employee of the government in Bakersfield here tonight, that this would be the best year they've ever experienced in their life, that they would experience unity like they've never experienced before, that they would be able to get things done that has never been done before in any calendar year. I ask God that you would bring creativity, I ask God that you would bring prosperity, I ask that you would bring divine ideas that only can come from you. And so, Father, I thank you for this year, I thank you for these meetings, I thank you for this team of government agents that are here to bring about the best for our people. I bless you, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn over, turn off your phones, and in keeping with council policy, councilmembers aren't allowed to receive or send electronic communication during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other portions of the meeting. And for safety reasons, we ask that no signs be present. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, we have a certificate of appreciation presented to Daniel L. Williams for 30 years of service on the Miscellaneous Civil Service Board.
Colleagues, I'd like you to think back 30 years. In fact, there's one of you who is not even able to do that, 30 years, just an idea. 30 years ago, can you remember that? Well, 30 years ago, Commissioner Daniel Williams was already serving on the Miscellaneous Civil Service Board. He has served for 30, that is, three zero consecutive years overseeing the selection, the promotion, the discipline of our employees. So it's all the departments with the exception of police and fire. He served as chairman and secretary of the board, and Commissioner Williams' goal in joining the board was to serve others. That's what you wrote in your application, and to make things better for all the citizens of Bakersfield. We are so thankful, Commissioner Williams, for your dedicated service to Bakersfield and to the citizens, and it is my honor to be able to present this certificate of appreciation to you. Thank you so much, and congratulations, 30 years of service.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say something?
To me, it was a pleasure to be able to provide some service that, to the City of Bakersfield, because I've learned a lot since I've been here, and the city has been awful good to me, so when you go and learn something, you need to bring it back and share it with others, and that's where I stood. I felt that being a part of the community, you would want to show that you were a part of the community by serving in whatever you feel that you were qualified to do. It was a pleasure for me to serve in that commission, and I thank you for putting me there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hold it together. Good afternoon. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the city clerk, and she'll make sure that the council gets copies. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the notice of the Brown Act, though, we are not allowed, as council, to take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff follow up with you. So, Madam Clerk, at this point, would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor Go, we have received 10 speaker cards this evening, eight on a single subject, two on separate subjects. The first speaker this evening is Tate Turner regarding the Earl Warren Cup.
Tate is Councilmember Gonzalez's appointee to the Youth Commission. Thank you for your service.
Yes, that is correct. Mayor Go and councilmembers, I usually normally serve on the Youth Commission for the City of Bakersfield, but tonight I represent the AP Government Students at Bakersfield High School. Next week, on Wednesday, we will be having a big competition show called the Earl Warren Cup, and I believe we have a video to go along with my presentation.
There was an idea to bring together a group of remarkable people to see if we could become something more, so when they needed us, we could fight the battles that they never could.
In time, you will know what it's like to lose, to feel so desperately that you're right and fail.
Incorrect.
Dread it, run from it, destiny still arrives.
Hello, Bakersfield High School, I'm President George W. Book.
My name is Tony Lev.
Good luck, and once and for all, it always is.
Evacuate the city, engage all defenses, and get this man a shield.
Fun isn't something one considers when balancing the universe, but this does put a smile on my face.
Arthur Schlesinger Jr.
Ladies and gentlemen, your 2016 champion, Nathan Sowen!
No, I did not think that. That was nothing I could do, for sure. So you could, next week, it's at Harvey Auditorium at BHS, 7:00. You can see me either take it all or brutally lose in the first round, so we'll see. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. It is a spectacular competition. I encourage you to attend. Next speaker, please.
Ray Scott regarding Keep Bakersfield Beautiful.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Go, City Council, staff. And once again, it's a privilege to be able to talk about, what I like to talk about is the depth of Bakersfield. Next Saturday, the 19th, the West Rotary Club, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, the Tree Foundation, will all be doing a beautification project downtown, going from cleaning out the planters that are in the midst of downtown, the Arts District, to planting trees, planting flowers. And once again, it's, when I talk about the depth of Bakersfield, I'm talking about all the people, the service groups that we have here in Bakersfield, to be able to, once again, beautify our city, because we have pride in our city. We take our city seriously, and we want to see it continue to grow as it is. The item that I've passed out to all of you is the Keep California Beautiful K-12 Recycling Challenge. This is an annual statewide event. Last year, we had over 326 schools in the state participate. We're looking to reach 500 this year. Also, we had a very generous donor who was able to double the amount of awards we're giving out this year. So we're giving out $38,000 in cash awards to schools unrestricted, and we'll be able to recognize 90 schools. Of course, I would, there would nothing please me more to see Bakersfield City School Districts winning awards. Kern County has done very well, especially the City of Arvin. City of Arvin has placed five consecutive years in this competition, and so I would, once again, be very pleased to see City of Bakersfield Schools be part of that and win. And the last item I have is the Keep America Beautiful Conference coming up this February in Baltimore. Once again, I get the privilege of representing Bakersfield and California at this conference. Because of CSUB this year, being the second national affiliate, collegiate national affiliate in the nation, Keep California Beautiful is receiving an Innovation Award, because our focus has always been to educate, engage, and encourage. That's what, as we know, the basis of all social change is education. Getting people engaged and encouraging them in their results, and that's what we do here with the Collegiate Affiliate Program and here at Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on Keep California Beautiful and Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. We're really proud of what you've done in giving us national attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Scott, thank you so much for your words this evening, and thank you also for representing Bakersfield at the state level and at the national level as well. I appreciate your service, I know we all do. And I also want to thank Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and all those committee members who are working hard in the downtown area, especially Mr. John Enriquez, and for his ongoing efforts. Certainly, more and more people are coming downtown, and it's important for us to have a, have a place that we can all be proud of, and I just appreciate all the volunteers who spend so much time down there, and I've had a chance to work side by side with them and say hello, and they do a great job. So thank, thank them on my behalf, and on behalf of all the residents and property owners of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor, the next eight speakers are speaking on the same subject regarding review of animal ordinances. The first speaker, Fabiola Plant.
Hi, good evening, City Councilmembers and Honorable Mayor. Tonight, we have a group of animal advocates here to speak about the amount of dogs and puppies on the streets of Bakersfield, the constant puppy litter drop-offs at the shelter, and the continual breeding of dogs to sell the litter of puppies. Out of town, dogs, rescues are pulling dogs from this area by the hundreds each month. Local rescues are running ragged, trying to alleviate the problem, and shelter staff and their volunteers are going above and beyond to find homes for these unwanted dogs. Currently, Bakersfield does not have any form of law that restricts people from having litters of puppies. There is no breeder's permit law, and there are no restrictions to the amount of litters each household can have. The only ordinances that attempt to alleviate the problem are the three-dog limit and the additional license fee for unaltered dogs. Tonight, we are asking the City Council and Mayor to be proactive in getting the dog overpopulation under control by setting up a review of the animal ordinances and implementing a breeder's permit ordinance that has restriction on how many litters are allowed per household per year. This is not a mandatory spay or neuter ordinance, rather, it is simply an ordinance that requires people to obtain a permit if they want to breed dogs and have litters of puppies. We understand that fiscal impact is important. We already spend plenty of money towards picking up, housing, and euthanizing homeless animals. We are not asking that animal control go door-to-door to check the animal's spay/neuter status. It should be enforced like other animal ordinances, mainly through complaints. Most importantly, it would give Bakersfield City Animal Control the backbone to give warnings, citations, and education when these citations arrive, situations arrive, I'm sorry. Many counties and cities in California have implemented breeder's permit ordinances with positive results. We have provided examples of ordinances from other cities and counties to leave with you for review, which I have here. I am asking if you can send this topic to the appropriate committee for review, and feedback would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Plant.
Good evening. I firmly agree with previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enns.
Annabelle Jimenez.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Annabelle Jimenez, and six years ago, I stood here disheartedly about the lack of dog breeding ordinances. I stand here today disgusted with the lack of importance on the same topic. I am tired of the endless unwanted puppy litters for free or for sale all over social media and in our streets. We continue to fail our pet population. I urge you to send this to review with the appropriate committee, and I ask you, six years later, is this issue of importance to you now?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Haley Eustis.
Honorable Mayor, councils, I'm not here on behalf of any rescue. I'm here because I live in the city limits of Bakersfield, and I work in the city limits of Bakersfield, and I've seen it all. The worst is the hundreds of ads and posts of people selling puppies in the city of Bakersfield as well as Kern County Limits. Have you ever seen a dog that has been tortured? I have. As a matter of fact, I have a male stray someone thought would be funny to tie a rope around his tail so tight that it got infected, the nerves died, and the skin eventually grew over the rope, and he was in pain every day. We had to amputate his tail. This male is at my house right now, along with his companion and nine other puppies. They were all strays camping out on a 70-year-old woman's property. I trapped them, and with the help of the community and rescue, each one of them gets to go home to a home that they deserve. But I have sacrificed my home, which they have destroyed, my time, my money, and the smell of my house, but I saved 11 lives. The community, your community, wouldn't have to sacrifice so much if there were stricter laws and regulations on breeding. There are so many people out there breeding dogs for profit, but what you fail to realize is that these backyard breeders don't care if they are producing puppies with medical issues, because they bred a mom and son, or sister and brother. All they care about is the money, but if the mom goes into distress during labor, then they dump her on the rescue or on the streets, because they can't afford the vet bill to save the mama and pup's lives. But what happens to these puppies with medical issues? Well, I can tell you, they end up on the streets, they end up at rescues, and they end up in shelters. Or worst of all, they end up being bait for dog fighters, because, hey, they need the practice. These backyard breeders are destroying our community. Do the math, the rescues, the shelters, the animal-loving community is completely outnumbered. How is there, is it that there is a law that is enforced, that if you live in the city limits, you're only allowed a maximum of three dogs per property? But yet, anyone can breed a dog in the city limits? That makes zero sense to me. A mom and puppies exceeds that, that limit almost every time, but there are no laws or regulations for breeding. I will leave you with this number. I have a mama dog that has clearly had at least four litters of puppies. Within nine, within the nine puppies that are at my house right now, six are female, including mom, that's seven females that go into heat twice a year. That's 126 stray puppies a year that are unvaccinated and unaltered, and that are running the streets of our community, and the math goes on and on, until I stepped in. Now it's your time to stop, to step in and stop the breeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eustis. We don't allow applause during this portion of the meeting, but thank you. Next speaker, please.
Angela Perdikis.
I don't know how to dress a mayor and councilmembers. I'm here, basically, we're all here about the same issue, as you can tell. I, my role in rescue is a little bit different. I am on the forefront. I am out there every day with my trapping equipment, my snares, my catch poles, you name it. I spend my time, my money, and everything I have rescuing puppies, mothers, you name it, off the streets. I've gone under houses. This is the problem in our community. We are facing people backyard breeding to the point where we are spreading disease not only within our community because of this, but we're actually sending it out of our community into different areas. We work with a lot of out-of-town rescues. When we have these sick litters of puppies being disposed of in our streets, and they're spreading disease to unvaccinated animals, this is becoming a real concern. This temper has been out of control this past year, along with parvo. We, we just need to really sit down and really get this under wraps, because it's just getting worse by the day and not better, and we would really, really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jill Carroll.
I'll be brief. I am just here this evening to request that breeders of the city be required to have a permit that would, excuse me, let me start over here. I'm here this evening to request that the city adopt a breeding permit law that require breeders of dogs, cats, and all other domestic animals to obtain a permit, and limit the number of litters a female animal can have every year. Currently, with no breeding permit required within the city limits of Bakersfield, it's been leading to irresponsible breeding and selling of unhealthy and sick litters. I spend a fair amount of my time rescuing animals that have been overbred and then abandoned, and I can speak to the fact that we are shipping our animals out, rescue groups are shipping our animals out. On a recent trip to Spokane, Washington, my cab driver told me that his dog was from Bakersfield, that it had been picked up on Hosking Avenue, and he had adopted it from a rescue group that brought it up there. So I would just ask, at the very least, that we adopt and enforce the state breeding laws, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Next speaker, please.
Lori Wyatt.
Mayor, councilmembers, I am here because I agree with everything that these people are saying. We have a very difficult situation on our hands. Our animals, we are bailing them. We see them daily in the news, on the streets, and how many of you, and me included, have we had to drive by after we've seen these poor things that's been hit? It's because of people that are breeding in their backyards. Unfortunately, I live in Ward 7. I love my home, but I have a backyard breeder across the street from me. They don't care. They're German Shepherds, they're breeding constantly, and they let them roam the street. They chase the kids we've called, but there's only so much that can be done without the laws. And that's what we're asking, is that you guys step up, help us, because we can only do so much. We're here to do what's best for our community, because I don't want to be known as the parvo and December capital of California, and that's what we are right now. And I want everybody here to be proud of how we take care of our animals, and these are not just animals, these are our family members. They need to see that they are cared for like they should be, and the way God intended us to do, is to care for them, not throw them out. So help us put the laws on the book and put teeth in our community to get this thing taken care of. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Next speaker, please.
Sundee Martino.
Mayor Go and councilmembers, my name is Sundee, and I am the co-founder of Bakersfield Boxers and Bullies Rescue. So we're a breed-specific rescue for pit bulls and boxers here in Bakersfield. We have countless messages from people who find dogs that are running on the streets, where they can't keep them because their landlord won't let them, and it really has become a bottleneck for us. As hard as we work trying to educate the public, we have events all the time, whether it's at our adoption events, or, you know, if you guys haven't seen, I'm here lately, we have partnered up with another rescue.
we have partnered up with another rescue, Safer Place Rescue, to do vaccination clinics, so we can move around park to park, and we try to get the dogs vaccinated, you know, for Parvo and Distemper, because we are the nation's capital, actually, for Parvo and Distemper. We have veterinarians on the East Coast that are coming here to study Parvo because we're where it's centrally located. So it really is something that's important. We have a lot of, you know, of different communities. They don't have the ability to take their dogs to the vet and that kind of stuff. When they pass away, they either bury them in the ground, or they toss them in bags on the side of the road, and then that is making, you know, that's spreading the disease very quickly. Our county shelter has recently had a very bad battle with Distemper, and it's not just affected here in our town, but also rescues outside of here. The nice thing is that our city shelter is on it. I've got to really commend them. They've done an amazing job to be, to become closer, you know, have a better relationship with rescues, also a better relationship with rescues and humane societies outside of here. So we're putting in all the work that we possibly can, but there's one thing that's missing, and that's a breeding regulation. If we don't regulate what's going on, all the work that we're doing now is worth nothing. I personally went boot on the ground, went to Rexland Acres area, went around door-to-door. Do you have a dog? Do they need to get fixed? Got them fixed for free. I took, I put sixteen hundred miles on my car, my personal car, in one month, driving to the house, picking the dogs up, taking them to their vet clinics, returning them the next morning, because those people don't have cars to get their dogs in there. They wanted to get them fixed, but they didn't have, you know, have the means to do it. So I did that. But it takes one litter of puppies to ruin all that work I've put in. Because as Haley pointed out, the multiplicity that goes on, you put one, you know, one litter in there, and those people don't get them fixed, they don't make sure that they're vaccinated, everything just starts all over again. So I'm asking you, please, from the bottom of my heart, to really help us out, because we're at the end of our ropes. If rescue stops, everything that we've done snaps right back to where we were ten years ago, and we have high rates of euthanasia, and we don't want that. So I just thank you very much for, for listening to us tonight. I'm going to leave these with you. These are the ordinances from the other cities all around us that do have a breeding permit.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for all your comments. I'd like to refer this to Legislation Litigation Committee, and I'd like somebody from the city attorney's office to reach out to these folks and getting any other additional information from them. Maybe they're looking for something specific that we can possibly add into code, and along with their contact numbers, so we can reach out to them when it comes to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, we have another request to speak. We're using new technology, and sometimes we're having some challenges. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to make the same referral. I appreciate the Vice Mayor making that. But before you all leave, I just wanted to thank you for joining us tonight at the city council meeting and bringing this to our attention. And also, thank you so much for all the work you do every single day to help our animals throughout the community. I know we all appreciate all the work that you volunteer and the time that you spend. I have a rescue dog myself, and honestly, I don't know where I would be without her, and so I really appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I don't have the benefit of sitting on that particular committee, I guess the one thing I might offer or suggest, because if you look at a map of Ward One, dogs don't care about county and city lines, and county pockets certainly, in my word, I think are a challenge. If you could somehow incorporate the county in that discussion early on, I think that might be worthwhile. I know I would appreciate it, because I got the county right across the street from my house, and I have stray dogs everywhere.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we look forward to positive outcomes. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Next item.
Under Appointments, Item A, Appointments to City Council Committees and Other Special Committees and Boards by Vice Mayor Parlier for 2019-2020.
Vice Mayor.
Well, you ready for your new appointments? I'm going to start with Budget and Finance. chaired by Councilmember Gonzalez, with Councilmembers Weir and Rivera. Community Services chaired by Councilmember Sullivan, with Councilmembers Smith and Freeman. Planning and Development chaired by Councilmember Freeman, with Councilmembers Smith and Rivera. Safe Neighborhoods chaired by Councilmember Rivera, with Councilmembers Parlier and Gonzalez. Legislative and Litigation chaired by Councilmember Parlier, with Councilmembers Sullivan and Gonzalez. Personnel chaired by Councilmember Weir, with Councilmembers Parlier and Freeman. Water chaired by Councilmember Smith, with Councilmembers Weir and Parlier. Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee appointee, Councilmember Weir. Alternate, Councilmember Smith. LAFCO appointee, Councilmember Rivera, with alternate, Councilmember Smith, correction, Councilmember Sullivan. Kern Cog appointee, Councilmember Smith. Alternate, Councilmember Parlier. Planning Commission Liaison appointee, Councilmember Freeman. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control Special City Selection Committee appointee, Councilmember Sullivan. Alternate, Councilmember Freeman. Kern Economic Development Corporation appointee, Councilmember Gonzalez. And Kern River Groundwater Sustainability Agency appointee, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have a motion for ratification?
Motion for ratification.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
There we go. Thank you. Next item, please.
One Appointment to the Golden Empire Transit District Board due to the expiration of term of Cindy Para, whose term expired January 6, 2019. An application has been received from Cindy Para.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Cindy Para.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. Councilmember Sullivan.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Ms. Para, you're here in the audience. Thank you so much for your service. Why don't you go ahead and stand up, and thank you very much. And next to her is Karen King, who is the director. Thank you also very much for all of the service that Get provides to our community. Next item, please.
Appointment of one regular committee member for Ward One and one alternate committee member for Ward Seven to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the expiration of terms of members. We have received applications from Anastasia Lester and Teresa Olson.
These appointments are by ward, so no ballots are necessary. I'm going to call on Councilmember Rivera for the Ward One nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to nominate Anastasia Lester to serve representing Ward One on Keep Bakersfield Beautiful.
Very good. And then Vice Mayor Parlier for the Ward Seven nomination of the alternate committee member.
It's my pleasure to nominate Teresa Olson for Ward Seven.
Very good. Motion?
Make a motion that we approve both nominees.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Olson here. Thank you so much. Go ahead and stand up, and thank you very much for serving and your willingness to do the hard work. Thank you. And also, congratulations to Ms. Lester, who I don't see out in the audience. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AF for approval. We have received a staff memorandum regarding Item 8A correcting the minutes.
Vice Mayor.
Does any, does any council member wish to recuse themselves from any items? No? Does any council member wish to remove any items from the consent calendar?
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Have a motion to approve Items 8A through 8F.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, we have a Measure N, Bakersfield Public Safety Vital City Services Measure, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transactions and use tax. And Number Two, a resolution authorizing the examination of transactions, sales, and use tax records.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat.
Just an introduction, Your Honor. Mayor and City Council, I assure you that the staff is busy every day placing into numeric form and detailed form a whole host of enhanced services that will be available to the community as a result of the passage of Measure N, and an integral part of that was something we promised many of the community service organizations, which was that we would be accountable, in part through an oversight committee, and Assistant City Manager Hewat is going to go into detail about that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. The first item under New Business today is kind of the administrative and tactical nature of implementing and administering the sales tax measure. Before you this evening are two resolutions. The first authorizes the city manager to execute two agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for both the preparation and the implementation of the measure. The CDTFA is the statewide organization that facilitates, implements, and administers these types of district taxes throughout the state of California for cities, counties, and special districts. So there are two agreements that are attached to the resolution. The first is a preparatory agreement, which is just that. It authorizes the state staff to begin to move forward with working with local retailers to actually prepare and implement the tax effective April 1st of 2019. The second agreement that you would be authorizing the city manager to execute with the state, excuse me, is the ongoing administrative agreement, similar to how the state administers sales tax currently and remits it to the city. This agreement outlines similar procedures for the add-on district tax. With the preparatory agreement, there is a fee associated with that. It's going to be determined, it's a shared fee amongst all the jurisdictions throughout the state that are implementing a similar type of measure. Our understanding, based upon conversation with the state, is that there are fifty-eight different jurisdictions throughout the state that are implementing a similar type of measure in this election cycle. So while the fee can get up to $175,000, state staff has indicated that it will be much less. But until they're able to go through that and process that, they don't have a number just yet for us. The second agreement, as I mentioned, is an administrative agreement. It's a standard agreement that the state, again, asks that each jurisdiction execute for the purposes of administering the measure. Again, similar to how it is structured today, the state does charge an ongoing administrative fee to process sales tax collection and remittance. That'll be the same type of structure under this agreement as well. The second item is a resolution that's authorizing the examination of records related to the district tax. So currently, only authorized agents or officials of the city are authorized to review certain records related to the current sales tax allocation. It would be, again, a similar structure for this add-on sales tax. So there, I believe, I believe are six positions within the city that are outlined in the resolution to be authorized to review the confidential records. In addition, the city utilizes Avenue Insights and Analytics for its sales tax consultant. They are, they look and break down information for us, providing us trends and insights. We've used them for many years. And what this resolution also does is authorize that group to continue to be able to analyze this data as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and staff is recommending adoption of both resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Colleagues? Seeing none, Vice Mayor.
I move the approval of the resolutions.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
A resolution establishing the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Bakersfield Public Safety Vital City Services Measure pursuant to the requirements set forth within Section 3.38.085 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code.
Mr. Tan, did you wish to make any comments? Mr. Hewat.
Okay. Good evening, once again, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. As mentioned in reading the item, the ordinance that establishes the Bakersfield Public Safety and Vital City Services Measure requires that prior to the operative date of April 1st, 2019, that the council adopt a resolution that sets forth the framework for a Citizens Oversight Committee. The Citizens Oversight Committee was outlined within the ordinance that was approved as part of the measure by the voters. The purpose of the committee is to act in that advisory capacity to review expenditures of the revenue generated by the tax imposed by the ordinance. The third and fourth bullet point on the screen is the language that is pulled directly from the resolution that called for the ballot, the measure to be placed on the ballot, where the intended makeup of the committee is to be a diverse demographic cross-section of the community, again, with experience in several areas. There are also several community organizations that were contained within that resolution that are encouraged to nominate individuals to sit on the committee. Under the resolution that's before you this evening, again, it would be a nine-member committee, there would be no alternates. We're looking to require that each committee member be at least eighteen years old and reside within the city for the duration of their term. Each individual would be appointed by a majority vote of the council and cannot be a city employee or a council member, and would serve a three-year term. These would be the primary duties and activities of the committee, and many of these, again, are contained within the ballot measure itself and within the ordinance. So I'll go over those quickly. It's to hold public meetings, to receive comments, again, reviewing presentations from city staff and discuss priorities associated with the measure. So they would be reviewing those presentations in advance of the annual budget process. They may be, the committee may decide to prepare recommendations on funding priorities for the measure and present those to you as a council, to the council. They will be reviewing the annual report that's developed by city staff and reviewing annual independent audits that will be done by the city's auditor. So with that, again, the resolution and the framework for the Oversight Committee is contained within your packet, and if approved, the timeline would be that the city clerk's office would initiate that recruitment immediately. We were shooting for an application deadline of January 5th with the intent of turning that around and getting the appointments on the February 6th agenda, in part because we are getting into budget season, and we will be before you in the next several months with not only what would normally be the regular budget, but also now the budgets associated with Measure N funds. So time is of the essence. Applications will be made available, as they normally are, through of the essence. Applications will be made available, as they normally are, through the city clerk's office, on the city's website, available by email as well, through the city clerk's office. And again, upon appointment, staff will be developing an initial meeting schedule with the group and beginning to present information to the committee. So with that, I'm available for questions, and staff is recommending adoption of the resolution establishing that citizens oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. I wanted to thank Mr. Hewat for all of his hard work throughout the whole process. Thank you very much. And also want to thank all of the partners, Kern Taxpayers Association. I see Michael Turnipseed in the back there, Bakersfield Association of Realtors, and Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce. Nick Ortiz is back there as well. Thank you so much for working with city staff. I know you had a lot of conversations regarding the language, and I appreciate all of your hard work, not only in getting us this far, but also throughout the campaign for Measure N. You know, it is important for all of us that we get this right and that our oversight committee is a strong one, and that we have high-caliber individuals who are able to give us input and to work with the council to ensure that we do what we said we're going to do, enhance city services. And so I'm looking forward to that opportunity to find those candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other requests to speak? Councilmember Rivera.
This is a procedural question. I'm just not sure how we'll handle this. But when February 6th comes, how will we vote as a council? Individually, on each person? Will we get all the names and check-offs? Nine? How does that work?
Councilmember Rivera, that is an excellent question. We've had a number of internal staff discussions about it, and so I'm going to tell you about the dilemma rather than the solution tonight. The dilemma is, we expect a big number of candidates to come forward. Don't know how many, but I expect it'll be a batch. And your normal voting procedure would result in sequentially voting on one, and the majority, the top-two vote getters get another vote. So that would be terribly cumbersome, and I think the city clerk would probably contract a flu or something and disappear. So we've been brainstorming other methodologies of doing it, and we haven't come upon a perfect solution. I think certainly the nominating agencies that support us should be given some level of recognition and priority, but that is up to individual council members to ascertain what that is. And we do hope to come up with a formula. If you have recommendations for us, we'd be happy to hear it. We don't want to make it terribly cumbersome. We'd like to make it as efficient as possible.
Okay, so will, do we meet again? We don't meet again before February 6th, do we? We do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that meeting, I imagine, just before January 25th, or I'd have to look at a calendar?
Twenty-third, I believe.
It's the 23rd. Okay. By the 20, if I could, I might just ask that maybe, maybe just before the 23rd, if you could follow up with us, I'd be interested to see how many have applied and what that pool looks like so far before that council meeting that evening? So that, based on how that looks, we might be able to give some direction for February 6th?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to second Councilmember Gonzalez's comments about the community working with us as we went out and educated the various groups, and then the groups came forward in support and understood where we were, and it's greatly appreciated. And I look forward to it. One of the most exciting things about this is the community working together to solve our problems and to improve the city's services. And I really appreciate that we're going to have a large group of the community apply and the business community with the chamber and the taxpayers and the realtors to help support. And more expertise and input that we can get on how to solve our problems, we appreciate. So it's exciting for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I don't see any other requests to speak. Vice Mayor.
Motion approved, the resolution.
You have a motion, please cast your votes. new technology. Madam Clerk, do you have all the votes?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with a gentleman that's been contracted by the County of Kern on their lead Six Sigma effort. I think it's something I'd like to learn more about. I think some, I think folks on the council would probably like to hear a little bit more about it as well. So I'd like to ask or make a referral that, and I'll give you his contact information, that we reach out to him and actually schedule him to present to the Budget and Finance Committee. I think the members of that committee might find what he's doing interesting, and I think there may be components we might be able to carry over to the city of Bakersfield. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two requests. First, to staff, Mr. Tandy, you may take responsibility for that. You had previously said that you and the staff were working to come up with your recommendations of how we might be, some of the items and the priorities in the Measure N money, the programs, the various ideas you have for enhancing services, spending these monies in those areas. And I would like to, I'd like those brought back to the council within a few meetings, you know, within maybe a month, because I think it will dovetail with the goal-setting process that I'd like to have, and perhaps these go together, an opportunity for the council to have either a workshop or input into developing what we would consider our, you know, major goals. I don't think you need more than five or six for the whole city, of things we really want to get done next year that we prioritize that'll ultimately be blessed and incorporated into your budget, because that's how we implement is through the budget. But to have a little discussion so the council agrees with you and staff that, hey, these are the really big things we want to get done next year, and then you folks will incorporate them into your budget plans, and they'll come back reflected in the budget. So I'm sure I articulated that very well, but I hope you can bring something back to us so we can generate some sort of discussion workshop with the council members on the big goals for next year.
If I could, Councilmember Freeman, the ballot issue has anticipated that the oversight committee being advised through the council would be the first to receive and do some public hearing kind of work on the proposed allocation of those funds. So similar to how the Budget and Finance Committee does that regarding the block grant, which after the Budget and Finance Committee goes to council. The priorities for N, of course, were pretty well articulated quite clearly in the ballot issue and the support documents. There are 13 particular items that were indicated to be spending priorities. The first five or six are all law enforcement-related, homelessness, fire, community assets, and so on. We are a little bit behind in updating the city council goals. They're a couple of years old, primarily because the impact of Measure N, whether it won or lost, would have had a dramatic impact on those goals. So we recognize that that needs to come forward at some point in time. But I wanted to clarify the structure of the presentations anticipated by the ballot measure.
I don't disagree with that, but I have a feeling that some of those recommendations will get incorporated into the big-ticket goals for the city for next year with regard to homelessness, with regard to public safety. So I think the two will ultimately dovetail into what are the council's goals for next year as reflected in the ultimate budget. So I'd like to find a way to marry those. If the timing is such that you need those first recommendations from the oversight committee, that's fine. But those really become recommendations to us to then bless and dovetail into a set of goals for the city, and then you reflect them in the budget spending. So anyway, I'd like to think about how we might do that, okay?
Do that.
The second is an item I'd like to refer to the Planning and Development Committee. I've had different members of the development community contact me and ask, could we have a, right now, it's a discussion, and that's why I'm saying, you know, Ms. Kitchen and Mr. Fiddler, who's not here, I'd give some thought to this. I'd like to have a discussion about something we might call a fast-track process for processing in Bakersfield. You know, if, for entitlements, for improvement plans, for building permits, you know, if the applicant does these things, this is the amount of time it'll take. To add some certainty to the process, maybe we'll call it streamlining the process, but I think it might involve some sort of, I want input from the building community to see if it's appropriate to develop something like this. I also think it's great for branding for the city if we can say, you know, in Bakersfield, they have this fast-track process versus the other cities in California don't. If you want to get something, so part of it is branding, and we may be doing a lot of this already, but I'd like to kind of formalize it so that people felt, hey, if I do this, this is the timeframe it'll take me to get through, and it'll become more clear what the building community has to provide staff with so it doesn't snafu in the processing, and the responsibilities of staff to work together to solve the problems. But I think we, I want to see this as a positive thing. This isn't a gripe session, something to work with the building community that gives them some certainty, maybe sets us apart from other cities. The ultimate goal, getting more development, more jobs in the community. So I'd like you to help me orchestrate this, maybe through a workshop, get input on both sides. This is a positive thing. This isn't a criticism of staff. This is, hey, how can we work together to make sure we can, people have a sense of certainty that we're going to help them solve the problems and get through as fast as possible, and faster than our competitor cities when you want to bring jobs to Bakersfield or development. So think about that and see how we might orchestrate that within a planning and development committee in, you know, the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment was just on our new graphics on the voting. I like the old two columns or three columns, and I only seen one column tonight. If we could, when we made the graphic, make it three columns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? I have none on my screen.
I want to speak.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Well, I love the first of every new year. I feel it's going to be a good year. We have an excellent, an excellent council. We have a strong level of respect for each other. We have an excellent, hard-working staff. And, you know, for years, of course, I've been on the city council for years, but we have had no scandals, nothing, nothing to indicate any wrongdoing or dishonesty or anything like that, and that says a lot. So I appreciate the staff for the hard work, all that we've accomplished. And through the years, we've had highs and then lows as far as our economy is concerned, but really, no one would know the difference because we keep accomplishing, and we continually reassess our priorities, and we have been very frugal. And I do want to thank the groups that work so hard to help the community understand the importance of Measure N. Not often does a community vote to raise their taxes, but it had been so long since we had done, since there had been any thing of that type. And to imagine that we had the taxpayers' associations, the Association of Realtors, the Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber, all working together, all agreeing and educating our public to help everyone understand the importance. And now it's up to us to spend the money very wisely, which we certainly intend to do. And the oversight committee is just one more level of importance that will help us. And so just appreciate everybody working together. And, you know, a lot of conservatives around that they feel very strongly about taxes, which we should, and I think our own taxes, we take that very seriously, but it worked out well, and now it's up to us to make it, to make it work like it should. I also want to mention, this past year, we have lost some very special, very well-thought-of, very longtime residents that are very, that were very loved. And so it was a difficult year in that area. Of course, our Mayor Hall, you know, very well-thought-of, and all of these were really pretty, pretty unexpected, serious illnesses that had, that took some very, very loved people in our community. Mayor Hall, Mark Abernathy, you know, he was a very hard-working man that was dedicated to getting good people elected. So certainly miss Mark also very much. And our Jenny Gennaro's young, wonderful husband, very, very difficult for she and her son. And now just a couple of weeks ago, Marvin Dean, that really got me my surprise, you know, he just was so dedicated to the city and, you know, just tried so hard to get the workforce going and, you know, just, just very eager and very, very committed to the city of Bakersfield. So that was quite a surprise, and I hear his service was wonderful. I miss his service. I'm certainly thinking about his family, he and his family, and as well as all of the families that have had, lost their loved ones this past year. So now it's the first of, first meeting of 2019. I feel it's going to be a good one. We're going to continue to work hard and accomplish all that we can, and I feel it's going to be a good year for everyone. One thing I wanted to, I thought about earlier today, the Chamber of Commerce, their annual installation luncheon is, I believe, always in January, and we appreciate our chamber. They work very hard and to, for the benefit of our city. The city of Bakersfield, of course, has been a member of the chamber probably for, well, certainly many years. So I requested earlier today that the city purchase a table for interested council members and staff that wants to attend, and I did want to mention that. I don't think there'll be any objections to that, but it will just remind us and encourage us to attend and certainly support our chamber. So if there's no problem with that, I would appreciate us doing that.
Councilmember Sullivan, if I may. There's a resolution the council passed 12 years ago or so that outlines those things that the council members can attend and be automatically that the council members can attend and be automatically reimbursed for. That's gotten out of date and needs to be updated. You mentioned one of the updates here. I've had several council members note to me other updates that are needed, such as Kern County Taxpayers Association annual event. So this Friday, we'll be sending out that resolution and general information encouraging council members who feel that it is short or out of date to add, suggest the addition of events, such as the one you referenced, that would be appropriate to add, and then we'll hopefully get all that updated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. We do need to support and to participate, and there, the meetings are always very informative, and we, we all work together. So we, you know, we certainly have everybody's support as a, as an elected body and as a, as our city. So thank you, that will be, that will be great. All right, well—
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. I want to recognize BPD Officer Michael Crowe for his outstanding efforts in helping fellow officers who lost their homes in the Paradise Fire. Officer Crowe helped secure between $10,000 and $15,000 in new uniforms for campfire first responders. Chief and I discussed that, and we just want to do a special shout-out to him. And then while we were enjoying the holidays, our Recreation and Parks Department was working hard with Kwanzaa Community Event and the Polar Bear Plunge, so just want to thank them for all of their efforts. Happy New Year, and we stand adjourned at 6:26. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 4 o'clock city council meeting of January 9th, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the workshop item only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Presentations or Workshops, we have a presentation from the Kern Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you. Mr. Tandy, would you like to make any comments before?
Mayor Go, good evening. So this item is in response to a referral that was made by Councilmember Parlier last year. As you may be aware, the city has a contract with the Kern Economic Development Corporation to provide a variety of services to the city. And last year, Councilmember Parlier asked that the Kern EDC come in and make a presentation to your council to give a status update and discuss future opportunities. So Richard Chapman, who is the president and CEO of the Kern EDC since 2006, is here today to present your council with that presentation and take any comments or questions that you may have.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to him.
Welcome, Mr. Chapman.
I think I have this one over here. Oh, in terms of fast forwarding. I'm sure if there's a clicker or— No. Thank you. I wasn't in the AV club in high school, so I'm still learning. Well, thank you for having me here today, Mayor Go, fellow council members. I also like to acknowledge our Chair, David Womack, with Kaiser Premier in the audience. So I will basically go over the, the work that we're doing, our work program, where we stand in 2019, and opportunities, opportunities moving forward. So Kern County is a public-private coalition of approximately 100 businesses, as well as cities like yourself, the county, special districts, educational institutions. We have been in existence since 1988. It's just celebrated our 30th year, and so I wanted to discuss basically our work plan as it relates to retention, recruitment, and what we're seeing moving forward, as well as acknowledge some of our recent successes. So as we market the county and the communities like Bakersfield, one of the important things is visualizing the incredible economic activity and, and potential here. So, and I'm not going to go through the whole, these top 10 lists, but these are some of the, the amazing. Our economic portfolio should be the envy not just of the state but of the country in terms of energy, ag, logistics, healthcare, aerospace, logistics, distribution, and manufacturing. Another way, you can see the visualizations, usually the millennials on our staff are great at visualizing. I come up with the bullet points, and they really make it pop. And, and the key to it, members, we use local talent, as you'll see the market overview that's been provided to you. That's actually a local company, MarCom, that we worked with, and, and I'll show, I'll mention that we won an international EDC Award 2017, Silver Award for promotional magazines. Again, as we talk about why this is not just a great place to do business but also to live, and I think as we talk about being these ambassadors for our region, getting that public-private coalition. One of the, as we describe economic development, how do you do the elevator speech on economic development? Everyone has their own definition. One, one thing that I devised, I haven't trademarked it, is four I's of economic development, and those, those relate to image, innovation, inventory, infrastructure. Image is so important. We know that in Bakersfield. How do we improve not just the outsider's opinion of Bakersfield but also the internal customers? And we are partnering with the city, county, various businesses on the regional branding initiative. I think that's important, that we work in concert and that our message is pretty consistent and constant. Also innovation, whoops, sorry, innovation, now I probably— Oh, there you go. Thank you. Thanks. Innovation, and I will talk a little later about our new initiative related to entrepreneurship and talent, which is critical in terms of the next generation of companies. You, well, I'll discuss the companies that have decided to call the region home, but also where are the future companies? How do we create that ecosystem for their success? And then inventory. Inventory is not just buildings, it's workforce. How do we make sure, again, that we have that pipeline that is going to produce employees for the future companies? And that is a, a national issue, that workforce quality. And again, infrastructure, the certified sites, the shovel-ready sites. I tell every community we're, we work for, we need to have the top 10 to 15 opportunity sites listed for those companies. 90 to 95% of research done by outside site selectors is, they do that before they contact us. So if we're not promoting that, if, if we're not pushing out that information, how do we expect them to see that? Another way we explain economic development, how it impacts the whole community. 100 jobs, one project, one location, how does that impact? Well, that translates roughly annually to about $7.5 million in residential sales. Also, 1.4 million in auto-related sales, car payments, insurance, a million in recreation. So that's, again, all ships float, right? All ships rise, and 100 jobs in one location benefits the whole economy. And so I think that's critical in terms of successes and explaining to various audiences. Site selection factors, this is kind of what, this is what we live by every day in terms of how do we promote Bakersfield and the region? And I'll focus actually on two and three. Labor cost and availability, right, of skilled labor. Again, that is critical not just to Bakersfield but the country. How do we, how do we produce the talent pool that's needed by businesses? One of the past slides mentioned, we're number four in STEM jobs in the country. However, 10% of our upper-level STEM jobs are unfilled. So most areas have an issue of overemployment. People are working in a job that's actually underneath, you know, below their skill level. We have the opposite issue. We have overemployment. And so that's, that again is something that we need to address. Quality of life really comes down to healthcare, crime. You can see our healthcare, our infrastructure has grown by leaps and bounds. Folks used to have to go to LA and other places for service. Now they don't have to make that drive, and so that is so important. And then we'll discuss a little later incentives, tax exemptions. Of course, I went forward, and I, I just want to focus on the top five. Our project portfolio, at any given time, we have about 20 to 25 companies. Most of these are actually outside the area looking to move to Kern County and Bakersfield, some to expand here. And if you look at this snapshot, this is a snapshot in time, primarily in the manufacturing, industrial, distribution side, but a healthy, healthy number in value-added ag, aerospace, energy. And so remember, Kern County actually is the second-most diverse economy in the country, and you can see kind of the full spectrum. And we, so we, in many ways, we have, we have this opportunity, but it's also a challenge. So right now, in the last year, we've worked with about 50 companies and about 7,500 jobs. I know we recently had a success with the city of Convergent, which is, we understand, going to expand by about 500, 500 jobs. Our Business Development Director actually met the consultant in New York, and I'll talk about our outbound missions, talked about the potential for Bakersfield, but also the potential to lose those jobs. So we're going to end up with a net 500 jobs. So I think that's important. Our organization, when you talk about recruitment, what does that mean? Are we waiting by the phone for a company to call? No, we actually have outbound missions where we meet with developers and corporate real estate executives. We partner with a group in the Valley called the Central California EDC. It's a coalition of eight counties, and we actually go out of the state. And you hear often, I've never seen anyone from California trying to recruit companies to California. Well, we know we can make the business case here. There are many differences from the coastal areas in terms of cost of doing business, more permit-friendly. We say tongue-in-cheek, we're the Texas of California. Well, we have oil, right, but we also appreciate business. So we have, we have significant traction. You can see some of the recent missions and conferences. ICSC, I know that's important to the city, growing the retail, retail sector. That's the International Council of Shopping Centers. IAMC is coming up, that we're one of the sponsors. That's related to the top 500, Fortune 500, primarily manufacturers, and that will be in Santa Barbara. We're representing the region. And so I think it's really important that we, we do go out there and beat the drums, not just go to conferences but to meet, meet the decision-makers, and so we spend a lot of time doing that. I mentioned our market overview. Again, we won the Silver Award. Buffalo beat us out, but pretty good when you consider the competition. That's really important, again, when consultants are doing a deep dive, they will download this. Thousands, we've seen thousands of folks download and do the research and then contact us. But other ways we market, how do we market? How do we push out information? You can't expect people to come to your website. Oftentimes, I won't check out our website more than once a week. What we do is we push out information, and we have a quarterly, we have two, we have a quarterly newsletter for site selection consultants. We have about 500 decision-makers around the country, and actually, the open rate is 36%. That's pretty good in this day of everyone's mailbox being, you know, full by 7:00 in the morning. And so we, we see success there, and I'll talk a little bit about, this is related to the county incentive program. And then our e-news, many of you hopefully get this. If you're not, it may be in your spam filter. That goes out primarily to folks in the region, and that has a 33% open rate. Pretty impressive. And again, we have three or four stories, obviously good news stories, but also real news stories about projects and expansions in the region. So I think, again, you push out that information. We find, too, with the average attention span being eight seconds, we need to also have the one-page, kind of the cheat sheet elevator speech, the industry impact statements. So we did one for oil and ag, oil and gas, and one for ag. And this isn't, this just isn't popular here. We actually, folks in Sacramento have requested it, and again, we need to beat the drums about how our industries, we don't, you know, just, what do we say? We power the world, or power the nation, we feed the nation, and we defend the nation. And these are some of the ways that we explain the impact of our industries, and then not just for people outside the area but local folks. One of our new projects, we have a videographer that does an amazing job of telling the story, Love Where You Live. So this is more about why should you, why do you want to live in Bakersfield? And we actually have, too, we interviewed Jennifer Williams about, you know, I think she's basically a millennial, why she chose to stay here, and some folks have come back. Rob Duco, who actually came from New York, why does he love living in Bakersfield? And so it's kind of a nice way of telling the story, various testimonies, not just people that grew up here but people that have moved here. So I wish I had time to show you that, but I'd probably go over my allotted time. The other focus we are, in the last year or two, have really, you know, dedicated ourselves to is talent and innovation initiatives. Only 44% of our two- and four-year degree students are here a year after graduation. Now, we hear, this is throughout the county, so it's, various institutions may have different numbers. But think about that, 44%, we need to improve. The number-one city in the country at 77% of retention rate is, of course, Detroit. Detroit, Michigan is number one. Many, why? Because the industry actually now, Detroit's reinvented itself, the cost of living is, is significantly lower than coastal areas, and so there are a lot of best practices. One of the things we're doing to drive innovation, one of the recent initiatives was working with the county on an advanced Kern, which is an incentives. Incentives are icing on the cake. They're an important part, but they're not the only part, but we knew that we're seeing, for instance, Fresno and other communities of Isalia that had created incentives that were, they were able to make the shortlist. It will help you make the shortlist. It won't help you close the deal, but it's, it is an important aspect. We use a local company to do this. You can see kind of making it pop, making it user-friendly, advancekern.com website. These are the industries. Again, this is a credit. This is something you have to create the jobs, you know, in order to get a credit on the, on the tail end. It is not an upfront credit or rebate. I can't, you can't really see this calculator. The way that we created this calculator is that the client does not have to contact us, they can run through this and then contact us if they'd like to, to, for more questions or submit an application. Most of these websites require you to fill in, fill, fill out your metrics and then you hear back once you submit it. We felt that it was good to give them this option. Innovation as how it specifically affects our area is critical. Recently, the Brookings Institution came out with a study, and it was pretty, an eye-opening study. Now, most folks would focus on the, the Uwaka area, 26, we're 26 out of 100 for job growth over the last 10 years. That's, that's very positive. However, we're 92nd out of 100 for young firms, jobs at young firms. These are firms under five years old. By the way, Fresno's 30th, Riverside's 60th. How do we improve that? How do we drive that ecosystem? This chart, I didn't draw the line, but there's a very strong correlation between startup activity and overall job growth. Areas that have a significant, you know, a very strong ecosystem for startups, in general, their economies are doing well overall. So that's, that's important to realize, that correlation. Also, we saw what was happening around us. You know, how Bubblegum Alley, which of course is San Luis Obispo, and Fresno, Fresno now is, according to The Atlantic, you know, one of the up-and-coming centers of technology. Riverside now is apparently one of the coolest cities. I don't know if that's temperature, probably not, but a hip place. I don't know if that's temperature, probably not, but a hip place to be, and then a tech hotspot. So we realized what was happening around us. How do we capture that? How do we capture that interest? Last year, we, I know several, you and I know Mayor Go, Councilmember Freeman attended, and we went up to Fresno. We toured Bitwise. If you're familiar with Bitwise, they started six years ago. This is an old auto dealer, upper right hand, old auto dealer. Basically, they got the keys and said, "Go for it." And now they're up to 300,000 square feet, several buildings. They're basically helping to redevelop downtown with about 100 companies. We also went to the Wet Center, that's on Fresno State. They have the Water Energy Technology Center. They have about 20 companies. They have industrial testing facility onsite. We were in this room, it was very humid, but we could see how they were testing various innovations. So that was a thing that we think obviously can happen here. Last September, we went to San Luis Obispo. This facility is right above Ross. You may not have even seen it, but it's amazing innovation center where they have companies, literally, these companies came out of dorm rooms. We met several CEOs that are about 25, talking about how they came up with the technology. They love San Luis Obispo, but guess what? When you look at the housing cost, you know, how long will they be able to retain those folks? So many of the companies were ag tech. One company was ag tech, one was another, a water company. These are companies that frankly should be in our county, in our city. However, you need various elements. It's not just about having a physical building. We know, like, the city and others are very supportive of business, but we need capital, right? And you can see with the Kern Venture Group and other, we're starting to see this come to the forefront. We have the culture, we have, and the talent. How do we have all these things come together? And what we are moving forward is on a talent and entrepreneurship initiative. Kern EDC, we're at the nexus, government, education, and business. There are a lot of local, small-business initiatives, we're very excited, but until we get in the same room and talk, are there overlaps? Are there redundancies? You know, how do we all get on the same bus and make sure that we're creating success? And so we're very excited to be part of that. As you see, we have significant companies across the board, but it's really on the small startup area that I think we need to up our game. So we are, you'll hear more in a couple weeks with the kickoff meeting. But I also wanted to conclude, Kern EDC is a 501(c)(6), but we also have a, about 10 years ago, we started a foundation. And the foundation's mission's different from the EDC's. The foundation is to improve that workforce development pipeline. We had our second annual Kern County Symposium at the Fairgrounds. I talked about various legs of the stools. This is about having the businesses, educators, and the students in the same room. The students need to see the potential, if they stay in Bakersfield, where the jobs are. The employers need to see the amazing talent. The students are showing their robotics programs, you name it, in terms of their STEM-related projects. They have won national awards. And so we had about, I think, 2,500 to 3,000 people there. And I didn't see one kid on their phone. And we heard people leaving saying, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" Actually, not just kids, but adults. But anyway, it was empowering, and people saw the potential that their parents saw what their students could do. And this is a, actually, we had Jose Hernandez, who was NASA pilot, NASA astronaut. He applied 11 times before he was accepted. Grew up, family of farmworkers. Brought him in to talk about persistence and just have your eye on the prize. The other thing, our foundation focuses on mentoring. Mentored students are 55% more likely to go to college than un-mentored students. We partner with East Bakersfield High School, as well as Independence High, on healthcare and energy. That's a critical component. And so that is, I thought I would mention that, as a, one of our, as the foundation works with the Kern EDC to make this region a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Colleagues, any requests to speak? It's not... No, try again. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard, I've had a lot of fun serving on KEDC. Anytime you can help attract businesses to our area, I think is a good and noble feat. But I'm coming off of KEDC, after serving four years there, and I'm going to leave you in the able hands of Councilmember Gonzalez. Before I pass you off to him, I just want to say that as Bakersfield continues to become an important regional hub for a host of services, I think it's extremely important that we continue that synergy, not only with us as the big fish in the county, but with all the outlying cities, too. And again, I thank you for service to KEDC, and please thank your staff for me, too. And I'm still going to go to your dinners.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You're always welcome at dinners by the Kern River.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Look forward to having Councilmember Gonzalez on board.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Richard. I thought, if you could explain what an innovation center is so that all the people on the council can understand, like the Bitwise one, the things we saw in Fresno, exactly what they are, and then, you know, what services they're providing for these young entrepreneurs? And then, any ideas on how we can push this process forward in Bakersfield to be able to get one? Because I know it comes from private funding for the most part, but have we made any progress in that? Is there really anybody to organize or spearhead it, anyway?
There, Councilmember Freeman, there are actually about three or four initiatives. And so that's a, we recognize that we need to sit down at the table and make sure there's not, again, overlap and redundancy for physical space. So you're probably, we have heard, any minute, I think there'll be a good announcement. So stay tuned for more on the, in terms of high-level innovation centers. Innovation centers are, it's not just about having a space for a company, to house a company. What these centers typically provide, legal advice, so you have a patent attorney, intellectual property person, also, guess what, a CFO. You need somebody, you may have the best idea in the world, but if you don't have the person on board to guide that ship in terms of financial ability. Marketing, they offer mentoring for marketing. And so there's many ways of helping this company. And there are concepts like incubators, accelerators, but the key other aspect is to have this meeting of the minds. You have these entrepreneurs that are in the same building, discussing their problems, challenges. I just got back from Paris. We were at the largest startup campus in the world, 1,000 companies. If you laid down the Eiffel Tower, that's how long this building was. And they actually accept companies from all over the world, which is an interesting twist. But there's many ways in terms of support. For instance, Bitwise, one of the reasons they're very successful is that they get funding from the school district to teach students coding. So it's not just helping companies succeed. So there are different recipes, but at the end of the day, Councilmember Freeman, it's about, you know, ensuring that these companies succeed and stay in the community. 85% of incubated companies stay in that community. That's critical. We keep the talent here. We keep the, you know, we keep the growth here.
Is there anything that the city can or should be doing to assist you in the process? Anything we can do?
Well, we've been, we have great rapport with the city, and I think, you know, they're definitely privy to moving forward in terms of, obviously, planning for these new centers and, you know, various codes. I think, you know, you're going to have existing facilities that, that's terms of tenant improvements and the like, understanding these. You see that auto dealer that was in Fresno. Also, they have converted a cold storage facility into an incubator. So understanding, you know, how do we pivot?
So you're already interfacing with planning and trying to, you know, solve some of the problems if they go into rehabs and things like that?
Yes, and the city's been very progressive, moving forward and able to anticipate the needs of these type of end-users.
Well, I can't think of anybody in the council who isn't in favor of this and supported, so...
Well, the other reason, the idea is frankly, having a place to take any type of client when they visit the area. Most communities with Bitwise, they may not be a high-tech company, but when they roll out the red carpet, you're going to bet they're going to take them to that facility. They're getting national, international attention, so this is a great place to convene any type of a business concern.
Well, as you move forward, you shouldn't hesitate to bring to our attention if there's things you need. I'm not sure what we can do, but we sure like to be aware. If there are things that somehow any of us collectively or individually, or city manager or anybody can do to help, you know, don't assume we can't, you know?
No, and I know that's why we're excited about the spring. I think we're going to have a lot of good, positive news. And again, we appreciate you all, you're on the same wavelength, frequency as we are. So that's exciting, because it's a matter of time before we have maybe one, two, or three significant incubators in the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you just punch in? It's not showing up on my screen, but Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, quick response to the question there is, you know, we've tried to do different code improvements for downtown to make it easier. It was on the agenda tonight for downtown parking. If we're converting an existing building, we don't change the parking, we don't add additional parking requirements. I think those types of things that we're looking forward on will help people come, because they definitely want to be downtown.
Yes.
And downtown is more difficult, and so we need to look forward and figure out how we can make that easier.
Right. Some will be parking, some will be biking, some will be Ubering.
Scooter.
Yeah, right, bird, what a bird, lime.
Thank you. Colleagues, I don't see any other punch-ins, requests to speak, but I know we're having some technology challenges which we are overcoming. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, who hasn't requested? Thank you, Mr. Chapman. What can the city do to create even greater synergy with KEDC and just be more effective in economic development, just in partnership?
Well, we've been very impressed, you know, the, it's always about gatekeepers, and I don't think we've ever had more gatekeepers, you know, be it representation on the board or with staff and others, and having, you know, working on the regional branding initiative, that's been a wonderful experience, and, you know, forging these bonds. And obviously, in terms of moving forward, you know, in terms of frankly, the financial commitment, in terms of leveraging your resources to help us, help, you know, help the region expand their economic development profile, would be appreciated.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership in helping us to get to some of the other places, to see what's going on in other communities, and I'm excited about the news that will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Mayor Go.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Vice Mayor?
Motion received and filed.
We have a motion? Please cast your votes. Oh, okay. We're having a little technology program problem right now. Your vote thing is, okay. You voted?
I voted for all of you.
Okay.
For right now, we will just have to take a hand vote. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Thank you. And if there is no further business, we stand adjourned at 4:29. Thank you.